Okay, I think it... Can you hear me? Okay. Would you call the robe, please?
Robert Kraus.
President.
Here.
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 Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
... At the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held December nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held November eighth, two thousand and eleven. Item C is approve an agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management for emergency management performance grant program funds in the amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars for the two thousand and twelve state and local assistance SLA program. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve in the amount of one million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, forty-three cents.
Make motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Anybody have any changes to the minutes or any questions on the claims? If not, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
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 David Roberts.
Yes.
And Martin.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider rezoning application number eight-eight-one located in the northeast quarter of section nineteen, township ten north, range two west, being south of southeast Fourth Street and east of Bryant Avenue from A-one Rural Agricultural District to R-one Single Family Dwelling District and approve ordinance number seven-oh-nine-eleven, application by R and R Land Development, Rocky Clark Development. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item eight-zero. It is in Ward one.
Mayor and Council, this property is a vacant tract of land. It's located just south and east of the existing Rock Creek addition. The applicant is proposing a single-family housing subdivision of seventy-eight lots on twenty-one acres, and that is a density of approximately three point five lots per acre. Water and sewer are available to serve the site from the existing Rock Creek addition to the north and west. A sanitary sewer listation is proposed to sewer the southeasterly portion of the property, and there is no floodplain located on the site. Access is proposed from our local residential street, southeast Eighth Street, as it is plotted in the Rock Creek addition, section five. There are several lots that are under the applicant's ownership, and that will be used to construct a street stub that would access the addition. Due to the number of dwelling units it is proposed, an emergency access road is required. This property is designated in the Moore Vision two thousand and twenty as urban density residential, and R-one uses are compatible with the urban density residential land use district. Therefore, a amendment to the comprehensive plan is not required. This application was filed after a November twenty-third, two thousand and eleven, planning commission meeting where the same property was under consideration for a gated senior complex duplex community, excuse me, a gated senior duplex community. At that meeting, many residents of the Rock Creek addition protested the increased density of the original proposal. They saw concerns of increased traffic and incompatibility of the proposed duplexes with the existing single-family homes in the Rock Creek addition. The developer has or did withdraw that application immediately after the meeting, and he did submit this current application that we're considering tonight for single-family homes. This application does directly address the two main concerns of the previous protest. First, this is for single-family homes and not duplexes. The lot sizes are approximately seventy-nine hundred square feet, which is well above what the city code requires as a minimum, and they are in line with the existing Rock Creek addition lot sizes. Secondly, this proposal reduces the number of living units from one hundred to seventy-eight. This may reduce the amount of traffic experienced by those that are currently living in the Rock Creek addition. So based on the compliance of this applications, this application with the Moore Vision two thousand and twenty, staff does recommend approval of the application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'd just like to commend Rocky for what he went through for this deal, you know, so it's, you know, there's a lot of opposition, a lot of things were said, you know, so it's... I appreciate what you've done here, so I do.
I'll second that.
I can say the other development you've done is absolutely beautiful, so it's nice.
That's very nice.
So... Unless somebody have any questions, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Anyone object or want to speak on this item? No, go for it. Yes.
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 Yes. Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider preliminary plat for Rock Creek addition, section six, located in the northeast quarter of section nineteen, township ten north, range two west, being south of southeast Fourth Street and east of Bryant Avenue. Application by R and R Land Development, Rocky Clark Planning Commission recommended this item approval of eight-zero. This is also in Ward one.
Mayor and Council, I'm just gonna briefly go over some access issues with this plat that the developer has agreed to provide, and this is again in direct relation to some of the concerns that were brought up by the residents who live in Rock Creek addition. The access is proposed from the local residential street, southeast Eighth Street. There will be an emergency access road that would access Sunny Lane through the emergence, through the Sunny Lane business park, excuse me, and that would be an improved road with chip seal, a gate that meets the fire department standards to be used in case of emergency, like fire or medical. A street stub is located and included in this addition, our neighborhood design of the property, it will provide access to the south one hundred and sixty acres that's known as the Urbanski property. The intent of this street stub is to allow in the future, probably the far future, of having additional access points to Nineteenth Street and Sunny Lane, which can be accessed by the Urbanski property. When that entire quarter section is developed and eventually hooks up with this street stub, that would then give people or the residents of Rock Creek additional options to exit and enter their addition. So it was really intended as to address the issue of more access available to them. Additionally, the developer has agreed to utilize the emergency access road from Sunny Lane for his construction traffic. This will greatly reduce the amount of the heavy truck traffic in the existing neighborhood, and this will go a long ways to protecting the residential feel of that area while that subdivision's under construction. Again, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone object on this or like to speak on it? If not, go for it.
Kathy McMillan. Yes.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
And Martin. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, item carries.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, appreciate it.
Item number five is consider comprehensive plan amendment number twenty-seven located in the southeast quarter of section twenty-three, township ten north, range three west, being north of southeast Nineteenth Street and west of Tower Drive from light industrial to medium commercial. Application by Malcolm Hall, planning commission recommended approval of this item eight-zero. This is also in Ward one.
Mayor and Council, items number five and six on your agenda are companion items, so I will talk about them together. This subject site consists of approximately one acre. It's located north of Nineteenth Street and on the west side of Tower Drive. The applicant wishes to rezone the property to C-three for a future van's pig stand restaurant. The zoning there is currently I-two. Sanitary sewer and water exist to serve the site. There is no floodplain located on the property. Access is provided by Tower Drive, which is a commercial collector street. There is no direct access possible to southeast Nineteenth Street because of the railway underpass at that location. This would be a downzoning of the parcel if approved to medium commercial. With that downzoning, it would be anticipated that the potential for heavy traffic would be reduced. The Moore Vision two thousand and twenty looked at when it was developed, does show this parcel as light industrial. When considering this application, we need to look at the pattern of the development along Nineteenth Street corridor. There is a trend moving away in that location from industrial uses to general commercial, and that, you can see that with the Showplace Market that's located to the south of there. There's also a funeral home that's being developed, and east of that is a new seven-eleven that is under construction. Downzoning this parcel to medium commercial will help to ensure a continued quality commercial development along Nineteenth Street corridor. Staff does recommend approval of both the Moore Vision two thousand and twenty amendment and the rezoning application. At the last planning commission meeting, there were two citizens to speak. One of the residents lived within the three-hundred-foot radius and had concerns of increase in traffic, insufficient access from Tower Drive, and future uses if the restaurant fails. There was also one resident who lives outside of the three-hundred-foot radius. He was also there to voice his concerns. His concerns are based primarily on compliance issues with various city codes and state codes. And also, he has brought up a concern about insufficient notification. I spoke with the applicant, or I'm sorry, the, this citizen on several different occasions to, to talk to him about these concerns that he has. I believe that he's just misinterpreting the codes. And in regards to his notification, the property that was left off of the notification list was the railroad right-of-way. It was not shown at county as being an actual property owner because it doesn't own the right-of-way by deed. It's simply property that they have right-of-way or an easement over. The property's actually just public lands that the right-of-way uses. So if you have any questions on me, I would be happy to address them. Also, the applicant is here, and citizens may want to speak as well.
I have a question for you. Right there, as you're, as you're going east on Nineteenth Street, when you turn in on Tower Lane, do we have any plans to put in a turn lane right there that you know of?
We don't have any plans at the moment. I've spoken with the city manager about that issue. There's been a lot of discussions about that particular intersection and the traffic flow, and I think that he's indicated that the city is, is committed to making that corridor work, function well, but we don't have any concrete plans at this point on any sort of improvements, but we'd be open to that in the future.
I know that came up in the planning commission.
Right.
So the, the parking entry will be on Tower?
Correct. All entryways would be off of Tower. Nineteenth Street and that location is just not accessible.
I make that left turn there every day if I go to work. I love that.
Every couple of weeks when you go to work.
I kind of set myself up for that. That is a horrible left turn already, and not that I have an issue with Van's Pig Stand or the rezoning, I have a real issue with the traffic issue there already. I can't even imagine anybody even wanting to go there after they make that left turn the first time. It's not protected, it's not eroded. That's a nightmare. Just throw it out.
It's an intersection that needs to be approved, improved, you know, and some turn lanes all the way around. It's just that, it's just not one that's leveled up. There's not been a significant amount of development out there until frankly, very recently. It just haven't risen up to the top of the list yet, so to speak. It's one that we would need to work towards doing, but that would be some time away. I mean, this is a development that there would like to see happen now, but we can't keep up with, with that in terms of...
Okay.
That was an awkward intersection, Sid.
It is.
You'll be an engineer's...
I'm not sure any other direction is that big a deal. It could be improved, but making the left turn, turn lane, if you're heading east, making the left turn on Tower, you've got...
We've actually gotten more complaints over Tower on the northbound leg, northbound, either turning left or going straight through on Tower.
Right, right.
And then the southbound traffic, not knowing quite what to do whenever the northbound traffic is trying to turn left. So the whole intersection needs to be reworked.
Yeah, there is some confusion there, but at least it's not backed up after making the left turn.
Yeah, whether we approve this or not, we still need to address that turn lane.
I guess that was really more my point.
Cause that'll back, it backs traffic all the way back up under the underpass.
Yeah. I had been told by a citizen that our, our entry to this would be off of Nineteenth Street, and I said, "That's impossible."
Yeah, that can't be, so...
Well, we know how Nineteenth Street is. Once something goes in and is successful, there will be others that will want to sprout up there pretty quick, so is there any way, Steve, that we can kind of look at that intersection now or something we need to wait on and kind of see what happens out there? What do you think?
Well, I mean, we can definitely take a look at it and see what needs to be done. It's just a matter of where we're gonna get the funding from.
Right, okay, yeah.
And right now, the general fund's pretty tight.
Yeah.
Very tight, to be fact, and we just don't have the money in the general fund to, to do it right at the moment.
What is it, how much does it, how much does it cost in the past to, to do an intersection like that, to look at it and all that kind of stuff?
Well, as far as getting an engineer to take a look at it and do some design work, we're not talking about a lot of money, you know, we could do that, but the construction on that intersection is gonna be difficult because it's tight already. There's no room for any additional right-of-way on the northeast corner. It's real tight on the southwest corner with that existing building that's been there a long, long time, so it's really, what we can do, I just don't know.
Okay. Elizabeth, have you heard of, do you know of any of the, any of the businesses that are looking at that area right now, or...
No, I haven't. After the, the funeral home started construction, Malcolm Hall's application is the first to talk about that area.
We might be able to just look at that light and do, if we could get a left, a left turn...
We can change the lights to where one leg goes at a time. That would be a temporary fix.
Yeah, if that east side could clear out, making that left turn and going straight, I think it'd eliminate a lot of the problem, and that would meet that hard conviction.
If you all remember, northeast twelfth and eastern some years ago was like that where one leg went at a time. It was not as functional as a clear lane, but it did work some, and we can, we can look at that as a temporary fix.
And I think once people get backed up enough times, they'll find another way, another access to it off of Fourth Street may resolve itself.
Okay. Then you have to deal with Robert's train on Fourth Street, don't you, Robert?
There won't be a problem, there'll be an underpass, yeah.
You'll park in front of my office.
Speaking of lack of money, right?
Yeah.
Well, I make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Second, thank you. Do we have anybody here wants to speak against this? Yes, sir.
I have some copies that I've got, cause it's a little small, so if you have to take one faster. Section twelve dash three-ten for a C-three zoning states that the, it's for general commercial established with major thoroughfare access. And I've gone through the Moore Vision two thousand and twenty plan. I've gone through a city maps, I've gone through public improvement sta, standards, the paving model, and everything I come to says this is a minor road. And in the, in the document that you guys are passing around, I can go over several of the things. The Moore Vision two thousand and twenty states that the extensive functional street classification was not developed for the plan. However, the major arterial streets were identified, and that's the first thing in there. It shows all the major streets in the city of Moore, and Tower Drive is not listed as a major street there. And that's in the, and that's in the Moore two thousand and twenty vision plan. The second map is a map that's off the city website. You go to the city website, lower right-hand corner says, "Hey, here's a city map." It's a little hard to read, so the next two pages are where I've blown up the legend. The legend on there has a major road and a road, and then the next page is a blown-up section of the nineteenth and Tower intersection where you can see that Tower Drive is considered a road and not a major road. The next two pages are from the two thousand and eight public standards improvement model. Actually, the next three pages are. They're models two-oh-one and two-oh-two of the paving, paving, and I believe Ms. Jones said that that was a commercial collector. However, if you go out and measure the street, and my house backs up to the street, so I, I went out there real late one night and measured the street, and it's thirty-two feet wide. So according to the paving models that are once again out on the city website for anybody to download, the last page is just a blown-up street, a blown-up of the residential electric, it is a little hard to see. But you do have fourteen feet from the center line to the gutter, and a two-foot gutter on each side for a total width of thirty-two feet, which is a residential collector. And then section twelve dash four-seventy-two, part one-twenty-two defines a minor street, and it says, "A street that transports much lower volume of daily traffic than a major street, classifiable into two varieties, local and collector. Local roads are those allowing major access to abutting land serving local residents, and a collector's street is one that channels traffic from local streets to major arteries." So there again, even in the definitions, it's defined in the city ordinance states that it's a minor street. The one thing I didn't put on here, I believe Malcolm Hall has forty-seven years of experience in land development, selling and rental building properties, and his own actions would also support this claim that it's not a major street. He's got two or three for-sale signs along Nineteenth Street and none along Tower Drive. If Tower Drive was truly a major thoroughfare that a lot of people traveled on, he would have some for-sale signs on there also.
What is your, your major objection here other than...
I, I, it, it's not a major thoroughfare, so it shouldn't be able to be rezoned from...
Nineteenth is.
But, but they're not gonna have access to Nineteenth, they're only gonna have access to Tower Drive.
From Tower Drive, which it abuts to Nineteenth.
Are you worried about cars hitting each other on the road?
Well, not only that, but you know, nine, Tower Drive is notorious to, for people at seven, eight, nine o'clock at night to get on there and drag strip down that street all the time. And, and the police department will sit at the child nutrition office at the end of the street. I believe everybody in the city of Moore knows that, and that street has a little bow about halfway down the road, so everybody says, "Hey, we can drag strip to the bow, get on the brakes, turn the corner, there's nobody there, let's light it back up." I mean, it's, it's constant, so you're gonna be adding more traffic to the road. The left turn, you know, you said mo, some people would just go around coming off of Fourth Street. Well, I live in the neighborhood, and if I go on Nineteenth Street, I'm affected trying to turn into the neighborhood. And some people said in the last, at the planning commission meeting, that the way to get around that is everybody knows to get in the right lane, they can bypass the people turning left. Well, I have to turn in onto one of the second street or third street into the neighborhood, so if I get into the right hand to bypass everybody turning left, nine times out of ten, by the time I get through the intersection, that person is finally, you know, the person that's been blocking it up and there's still fifteen or twenty cars is gone, and so now I'm having to try to cut back over to turn into the neighborhood.
No, I know exactly what's wrong about there, cause I deal with that too. I, I'm just, I'm a little confused if we've got an industrial area there versus a restaurant. I don't see what the difference would be versus putting in some industrial outfit could have just as much traffic.
The industrial outfit could have just as much traffic.
Yeah.
More than likely, an industrial traffic, they're gonna go, and it's gonna be business-related, eight to five, Monday through Friday, and, and you would have, it would be more of a, people would go and they would stay there for an extended period of time rather than in and out and trying to go get some food.
Well, those guys that have those big old trucks with those big logs rolling up and down in there all hours of the night and everything else, I see those come and go. I have a business down on Tower Drive, so I see that.
My name's Steven, Sheriff. I live at sixteen-oh-nine Willow Brook Street.
Randy, you, do you see any legal problems with the, the variances or any, anything here in the sections that would keep us from doing this? Okay. So you're basically opposed to the restaurant or opposed to the zoning?
Opposed to the rezoning.
Okay. Even though there's so many other things that could go in there?
There are a lot of other things that could go in there. However, it's such a small parcel of land for, I mean, you could put a, I believe, you know, some warehouse or something in there, but the warehouse traffic's not gonna be a, as intruding as a, a restaurant would be.
Is the guy with the restaurant here?
Would you like to...
Is there any chance you could talk to us maybe a little bit about kind of the traffic that you see and, you know, cause I, I don't think that tra, I mean, not knocking your restaurant, but I don't think you're gonna have a thousand cars an hour coming through there, but...
Mark Schuman, forty-one-oh-one South Telephone Road here in Moore, Oklahoma. We see an average, we run about eighty tickets a day right now, and we'd obviously, we'd like to see that be a hundred and twenty or so. Takes about two point three people per ticket, which means there's two point three people in a car versus the drive-through. Sixty to eighty cars a day is what we're seeing in our establishment right now. And according to the last figures I saw on the Tower Road, there are around five hundred cars going one way, five hundred going the other, is that right? Last time we looked at it?
Yeah, a little less than that.
A little less than that, so we're, we're talking, you know, for the total traffic going both ways to be less than ten percent increase, we'd like for it to be a little bit more than that.
What, what hours do you guys operate?
We opened up at eleven, and we stopped serving at nine on weekdays and ten on weekends.
So you'll miss the morning rush hour when people are trying to get out of that area?
We will.
What's your biggest time, I guess, when people going home to stop, or...
Typically lunchtime, noon would be our busiest time, and then again, probably about six o'clock. And I, I sat over there on that corner the last couple of weeks on Friday night, and it's really dark over there, and there's not a lot of traffic at, you know, six, seven o'clock at night. Once, once the five o'clock hour is over, I mean, I, I think I was open about six fifteen to seven fifteen, counting cars, just kind of thinking, how, how would this actually work, but, and it dies off pretty quick once the five o'clock traffic gets through there.
Would this be a second location for you?
No, we're leasing that location right now, and we'd like to, we'd like to see that building go bye-bye.
Actually, in terms of traffic at his current location versus this, and even though it doesn't address this gentleman's problem, there's worse traffic over on Fourth Street at your restaurant than there ever will be here in terms of the overall traffic effect.
And we, we keep it all, we keep it cleaned up. We don't, typically, business slows down by eight o'clock. When I say we're open till nine, I mean, I'm, sometimes I'm lucky to make three or four cars come through the drive-through at between eight and nine, and sometimes, I mean, might be more than that on a Friday night, but a lot of times, there's nothing between eight and nine, but that's what, time all the vans closes, so we try to keep them all the same.
Is the majority of your traffic drive-through, or do you have people...
At the Moore store, yes. But we only have, we have twenty-four spots, and some of them, I don't even think the city actually classifies as spots whenever they're doing the service, how many people can occupy a building and whatnot. I think it's actually twenty-one is what the city says we have, but we think we have twenty-four, and once we have three or four employees, it's, most of, most of it is drive-through. Sixty-five percent of our sales go through the drive-through.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just, you know, I've seen this traffic issue come up time and time again, and, and once the place is established and so forth, it's almost no consequence. And I think that's what we're dealing with here, is just basically fear that it's gonna change the nature that drastically, and that's not gonna happen.
I, I appreciate your concerns. I mean, we're all worried about traffic on Nineteenth. I think if any other businesses come in in that area or want to, I think we need to definitely really take a big, hard look at that, you know? I just don't know if this one restaurant, you know, is gonna be that much of a detriment to that, I don't know.
Well, there's really no more land along Nineteenth Quarter to develop right now, is there?
There's a couple of empty lots in between, but fourth and Nineteenth, the nine on the corners.
I'd make a motion if we approved.
All right.
Second.
Thank you both.
Oh, yeah, we already have a motion and a second, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Jerry Cadman?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
And Martin? Yes. Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy McMillan? Yes.
Yes, item carries. And thank you, by the way, for having your business in Moore.
Appreciate it. Item number seven is approved CDBG contract number eleven dash oh three with the Father's Business for eight thousand dollars to per-
That's number six.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, thank you very much. Item number six is considered rezoning application number eight seven eight, located in the southeast quarter of Section twenty-three, township ten north, range three west being north of southeast nineteenth Street and west of Tower Drive from I two medium industrial district to C three general commercial district. And approve ordinance number seven zero five eleven. Application by Malcolm Hall. Planning commission recommended approval of this item eight zero. This is also in Ward one. And I thought we lumped them together, sorry.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
David Roberts?
Yes.
James Mollin?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Boyer?
Yes.
Kathy McCallum?
Yes.
Jerry Cavan?
Yes.
One of us.
Yes, excuse me, yes, item carries. Now, item number seven. Approved CDBG contract number eleven dash oh three with the Father's Business for eight thousand dollars to provide food pantry services to one thousand more households.
Mayor, Council, this is our last public service contract for our two thousand and eleven CDBG project. The Father's Business would like to utilize eight thousand dollars of the CDBG funds that we received through HUD to provide perishable food items, things like milk, meats to low-income residents in Moore. With the eight thousand dollars, they can provide packages to one thousand more families. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I know this group has done outstanding work. Back in the ninety-nine tornado and the May tornado, they passed out food and clothes and everything else to everybody. And they did it out of their own pocket. And I really appreciate these guys.
I would move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? I'm just glad we can help them. Would you call for the vote, please?
James Mollin?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Boyer?
Yes.
Kathy McCallum?
Yes.
Jerry Cavan?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider awarding bid number one one two dash zero zero eight, purchase of a new two-way radio system to the lowest and most responsible bidder. This emergency management.
Mayor, we're going to ask you to table this item. We did put the item out to bid and received bids on this. The pricing was rather high. And we, Gail and I had a lot of conversation about this and have had over time. This is something that we need, but we obviously want to do it as economically as possible. There is one other potential alternative for the radio system that would be less expensive, or at least we believe it would be, at least initially. So we're going to investigate that first before we come back and say we can do that and/or to accept one of these bids. So I don't know. It'd probably take a month or two, Gail, and to, to do that, so.
We have a table and motion?
Make a motion. Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Make a motion to table the item?
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Boyer?
Yes.
Kathy McCallum?
Yes.
Jerry Cavan?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
James Mollin?
Yes.
Yes, item carries. Or, item number nine. Item didn't carry, item was tabled, sorry. Item number nine is considered declaring certain SCBA equipment as surplus and authorize staff to donate it to other cities for their use.
Mayor, Council, SCBA for y'all, those that may not understand, it stands for self-contained breathing apparatus and fire services. The air tanks the firefighters use. Since this equipment that's listed on page three is an assortment of equipment that are several years old, we currently use a different equipment, style of equipment. It's more upgraded, it's a high-pressure tanks. The, these pieces of equipment that's listed here are low-pressure. So I guess what I'm trying to tell you, it's useless to us, we can't use it at all. It's basically drawing dust, as the old saying goes. All of our new stuff, as well as some of this, has been purchased with Homeland, grants from Homeland Security. So as you can see on page eighty-three, there's some cities that have shown city, I mean, have shown interest in this. They can use it because they're still smaller cities. They're needing the equipment very badly, whereas we have it and we're not even using it. So I would ask if you can and would to declare this surplus to the City of Moore. It has no, basically virtually almost no value to us because we cannot use it. But it'd be tremendous to the other cities. And I'd ask that you consider donating it to the cities that are listed. We've contacted them, they use this equipment now. They would be very appreciative and it would not go unused. It'd help them tremendously. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer your questions.
I have one, but it's for Randy. Randy, can we do this?
Yes, or it's required.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve this item.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Jerry Cavan?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
James Mollin?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
It's kind of nice when we can donate equipment and not have to ask for the donations, isn't it?
Yes, exactly. Item number ten is consider approval of change order number one to the Shawnee Lighting Systems Incorporated for the amount of two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars for the Buck Thomas Football Field lighting project. Mr. Park, recreation?
Thank you, Mayor. As the council will recall, last October, you all approved a lighting project for two football fields, unlit football fields at Buck Thomas. That project is basically done. There were some additional conduit and trenching work that we didn't anticipate nor did the contractor. So the amount is two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars to, to cover their costs that they incurred as part of this project that we didn't anticipate. So with, once this is done, the project is done. And if this gets approved, we should close out the project. And Shawnee Lighting did a great job for us. So all of our fields out there are now lit and we'll be ready to go for next football season.
I'll be happy to take any questions. What was the closest bid to the Shawnee contract?
The closest one, this came in second, was Bliss Electric.
Okay, and how much difference was it? And did it include these change order items?
It, there was a, a number that they, that we requested from each contractor for a change order. The difference between the original bids, I'm going from memory here, was about thirty-seven thousand dollars. So even with this change order, it wouldn't have impacted this at all.
All right, so I need to know. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the change order.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Yes.
Jerry Cavan?
Yes.
James Mollin?
Yes.
James Mollin?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Boyer?
Yes.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number eleven is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held December the nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve in the amount of four million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, ninety-nine cents.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Everybody get their questions answered or any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, anybody want to make a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jerry Cavan?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
James Mollin?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Boyer?
Yes.
Kathy McCallum?
Yes.
Yes, item carries. Item number twelve is consider authorizing the purchase of four hundred and twenty-five polycarts in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand dollars.
Mayor, Council, our inventory is getting, getting low on our polycarts we set for our citizens. And we went out for some price quotes. Since this bid is less than twenty-five thousand dollars, we can get written quotes. So I ask that you approve the purchase with Toder Corporation.
Okay, and that being the lowest bid? Are they zinc carts?
No, they're, they're different carts. Actually, they're going to be a better cart.
For the truck?
Well, actually, the carts we have now are made out of a harder plastic. So if they just get, if we, when we stack them sometimes in the yard, they'll fill up with rainwater sometimes and they will burst.
Okay.
These won't do that.
I know when we change polycarts, people complain more about anything else.
They'll like it.
As long as they like them, we're good. Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote?
David Roberts?
Yes.
James Mollin?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Boyer?
Yes.
Kathy McCallum?
Yes.
Jerry Cavan?
Yes.
One of us.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number thirteen is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held December nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, sixty-six cents.
Move to approve?
All right, thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? Any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote?
James Mollin?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Boyer?
Yes.
Kathy McCallum?
Yes.
Jerry Cavan?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
One of us.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item fourteen is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up, would anyone like to speak? Okay. Item B is items from the city council or trustees. Yeah, it is. Uh, I have one. What's wrong with the sewer plant? It stinks so bad.
That's why we're building, that's why we're building a new one.
It, well, yeah, but it's not raining or anything, it really does.
Probably the same thing that's been wrong with it all along, quite likely. But we have gotten a few more complaints of late. But help is on the way.
Okay.
That's all I can tell you.
Okay, that being said, item C is items from the city manager or trust manager.
Um, I just wanted to remind you all about the special meeting next Monday night at five thirty with the joint meeting with the Parks Board to receive the first presentation on our Parks Master Plan. I think you're going to be really excited with what you hear. We're excited about presenting that to you.
What just?
It's five thirty.
Five thirty.
Next Monday. I sent a couple of updates the last couple of days, just giving you a lot of information. So if there's any questions about that, let me know. We did wind up with two hundred and fifty-two permits for the year. That's down a little bit from last year, a pretty manageable number. But I expect that to begin to go back up at some point. Deidra's shop is real busy with several commercial ventures that she's talking to and restaurants. So I think that two thousand and twelve is going to be another good year for us. I really do. Excited about what's going to be coming.
Do you know when Hollis is going to open?
February sixth.
February sixth.
Is their date. Early March, I believe, for, for the IMAX. March the second, as I believe the date they've told us. But February sixth for sure on Hollis. So I've got a copy of their menu here, if you want to take a look at it, too. It's pretty good, some pretty good stuff, if you want to see the menu. But that's all I have, Mayor.
You only made one copy?
Well, it's all I, it's all I got.
Cutting back.
Cutting back. That's right.
We can, we can, we'll email it to you all because I just got one copy earlier of it. But it's a nice-looking menu.
Okay. Item fifteen is adjournment.
So moved.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Boyer?
Yes.
Kathy McCallum?
Yes.
Jerry Cavan?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
James Mollin?
Yes.
One of us.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming. Oh my gosh.
It does, it really looks good.
Will? Enjoy your time, officer?
Yeah, we went down there to Playa del Carmen and spent a few days.
I go to jail there, okay?
Good weather.
Felt safe?
Yeah.
A lot of shots here and?
Didn't see any criminal looking types or anything like that, you know, you know.
You can get that brick down there.
Where or not?
Isn't that crazy?
I think as long as you're in the touristy areas of Mexico and don't go to Guadalajara for a trip, you're probably doing pretty good.
Stay away from the border.
Stay away from borders, that's right.
One day.